Welcome to Inside Independence, a cable show of Independence Television. I'm Joette Kuntz, your host for the show. Today, our guests will be the candidates for the Office of Trustees of Independence Township. All candidates were invited to participate in this show. Before you meet the candidates, I'm sure you are interested in knowing what trustees do. An elected trustee acts as a representative of residents of the township in legislative matters and fiduciary responsibilities. They vote on issues that come before the township board and are responsible for all revenues and expenditures by the township. Trustees have input into the budget of the township as well as vote on the bills of the township. All candidates have currently designated the same political party. The August primary, Tuesday, August 6, 2024, could determine who will be elected to township offices that will change in November. Thus, each resident's vote is really important in the primary. A quote by Pendulum Swings, a book by Larry J. Sabato, says, "Every election is determined by the people who show up to vote." Each candidate will take two minutes to introduce themselves to the viewers and then share with you some of the issues they see facing the township and some possible solutions to those issues. On the screen, you will see voting locations for each voting precinct, obtaining absentee ballots, and other information. Any questions, please call the Independence Township Clerk's Office.
Hi, my name is Ryan Cosper. My wife and I have been married for 10 years and residents of Independence Township for five of those years. We moved to Independence Township to be closer to our family, who also reside in the township. Over the years, we have been blessed to spend time in the beautiful parks and enjoy many of the wonderful programs put on by the Parks and Rec Department. My favorite event is the Walk with Santa at Bay Court Park. We've taken our two nephews to this activity several years running, and I always look forward to coming again the following year. I am also an avid skier and consider Pine Knob my home base for great winter skiing. I've worked as a registered nurse on a cardiac progressive unit at Beaumont Royal Oak for five years. I enjoy my work and have received numerous accolades from patients and staff for having identified areas for improvement for our patient population and staff. I am running for Township Trustee because I am passionate about keeping our green spaces open for all residents. I believe in thoughtful development that supports the needs of our community, utilizing already developed corridors like Sashaba Road and Dixie Highway. I want to attract businesses to our township while also encouraging small businesses to thrive. My wife and I are frequent shoppers at Clarkson Family Farm, and we love Thursday P-Tonight at Hamlin Pub. In keeping with the small-town feel, I strongly believe that there are too many refuse companies servicing our neighborhoods. Multiple trucks coming through our streets every week cannot be good for our infrastructure. For example, in our neighborhood alone, we have three separate companies that all pick up refuse, recycling, and yard waste. That is nine heavy trucks on our neighborhood roads. I think that we should model neighboring towns' approach that use one refuse company. Township residents can still be built individually with a hopeful reduced cost. I also think there is an opportunity for an additional oversight for large contractor developments. I would encourage more involvement on those projects by government entities. Case in point, the Walden Village development that was sold to township government to have a large open area, now it has been shoved into the corner where their land meets the highway. When elected, I will work with my fellow trustees to move forward with these ideas, as well as work in partnership to support their ideas and plans. We are all on the same team and want the best for our community. Thank you for watching. I hope I can count on your vote.
Hi, my name is Tina Holland, and I'm running for the Independence Township Board of Trustee. I moved here in 1995, and my children graduated from Clarkson High School. And my master's degree in education from Central Michigan University in political science, administration, and policies, and I studied immigration law and administration policies. I did community service, such as I led and organized a job fair for high school students at Clarkson High School in 2000 and 2001, as well as I was a president in my HOA Lake Walden subdivision. I did library and senior citizens center volunteer work, many other volunteer work to help disabled kids and adults, to help access the Sashaba Plains Park for them to go in to the premises a lot faster. My objectives are, is to get more police hiring for safety reasons and a larger substation with the fire department added. Independence Township population is increasing fast, so is rising crimes. Uncontrolled construction in businesses, housing, townhouses, to name a few, thus more traffic and crimes. Police has currently 30 vacancies to be filled for more traffic road officers, crasher officers, school officers, and many other necessary positions for police officers. The shortage of police officers to get to crimes and traffic accidents is harder to get to the scenes faster. Increase of flock cameras are needed to respond to crimes and accidents faster. Police has very few. A police and fire large substation with more hired officers will benefit police work with faster and response to the community population and safety. Detectives are in dire need of private officers. My objectives are, the previous and current board members have visited and realized that the much-needed more spaces of rooms and officers need the work in the office rooms and very compact with desks and office equipment. No room dividers to separate spaces for officers to have private duty needed. Nothing has been done for years from the previous and current board to address these issues that the police need to handle uprise of population and uncontrolled construction as a higher priority. I hope myself and the new Independence Township will decide a larger police substation to be built is the priority, not the township wants. I think, Tina Holland, I, Tina Holland, am running for the Independence Township Board of Trustee, and I want to hear your concerns and do what our citizens want, not the township board wants. It's time our township citizen has to say what is needed for our community. Thank you very much. Tina Holland, running for Independence Township Board of Trustee. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Morackle, and I'm running for Independence Township Trustee. I've lived in the township for 28 years with my wife Kelly and raised my two grown daughters here. My wife and I are both military veterans. My wife is a pre-K teacher, and I own a construction company that specializes in historical restoration work. I moved to the township back in the 90s to build new homes, and I've lived in three different sections of the township and currently reside on the north side of town, on the north of I-75. I was originally appointed to the Planning Commission in 2003 by Supervisor Dale Stewart. I achieved my Master Citizen Planner certification in 2005 and served on the Planning Commission for almost two decades. I was removed when my opinions on development didn't align with the Walden Center development and other poorly designed developments that had been occurring since coming out of the recession. I spearheaded the revitalization of Dixie Highway corridor plan during the last recession and again got the DDA started to make new investments into the Dixie Corridor possible again. I helped implement the Residential Open Space Committee to help guide the township on better ways to protect open space. I also fought against the LED signs in the township, the Rider Truck Project, and the Walmart back in the day. I helped create the Greenways Plan while also protesting non-residents being able to sit on the township board. I worked with past board members to build the original senior center and saved one of the oldest houses in the township, the McCord Stickney Home, an 1832 Greek Revival, and currently live in the house. I helped start Preservation Clarkston to help preserve the character of our community through its structures and natural features. With this organization, we were able to team up with the Clarkston Construction Tech Program and teach hundreds of kids the trades and valuable life skills while saving the Bailey House, a big piece of the township's history. There's probably more I could say, but that's enough about me. Let's talk about us. I was fortunate enough to be appointed a couple of years ago to the township board, which gave me a lot of access and knowledge of how the township operates. Having owned my own business for 30 years, I can tell you the township does not run like a business. There are so many great people that serve us every day with little recognition, people who have made a career of serving our residents as part of the service organization that it's actually supposed to be. To run a service organization, you want qualified, dedicated people wanting to serve. The way it's set up with elected people running the township, it puts us at a disadvantage. The elected officials aren't interviewed and hired on their qualifications and backgrounds and often have no education in the field that they are overseeing for the residents, making really important decisions for the rest of us. The trustee position, the one that I hold, has the same problem. Being involved for 20 years, I've learned a lot, but I'm certainly no expert in finance, elections, police, fire union contracts, and all the other big decisions that we're required to make as trustees. Throw in all the inner-office emotional decisions, worrying about always getting elected to keep your job instead of doing your job, it can get really messy. Well, with 20 people almost running for office, it appears it's pretty messy. I have added a lot to that, I admit, for providing unwanted oversight that I committed to give when I was appointed to the board, and that's created some obvious chaos. Development, density, and traffic are the big three, mostly caused by bad decisions, giving more benefits to the developers than the residents, and we don't need to build out in a hurry. We're a very desirable place, and we can wait for better developments than we're getting now currently. Sashaba is turning into a travel rest stop on I-75. We are probably the worst negotiators I've ever seen, giving density bonuses, small lots, and destroying the landscape so people can profit from us is not a good strategy. Another big issue I see is the deterioration of the roads that the residents can't afford to fix in their neighborhoods, and the township needs to do a lot more to figure out how to solve that problem for our residents. The dysfunctional township board is up there at the top also. There is little to no leadership or direction currently being given to the employees at the township to continue to do better. The solution, in my opinion, is to get me some help, to put the necessary protections in place, to keep Independence Township community, the community we love, and put the residents over others' profits. There needs to be a lot more restrictions and inspections to protect the residents, and if you want me to continue to work towards implementing these policies to protect us going into the future, then vote for me August 6. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mark Pedersen. Welcome. I'd first like to say that I am also the only new candidate here that is a former township board member and a member of three lake boards, Wamiga, Oakland, and Milpance, and a member of the Independence Township Safety Path Committee. With that said, I am also a 60-year resident. I am also a former president of Clarkson Chiefs Youth Football and Cheer and vice president of the entire Northern Youth Football League. I am also a veteran, United States Marine, and serving in Kanoei Bay, Hawaii. And firstly, let's talk about township issues, township board issues. We have a revolving door policy of the same board members on this board, and it's been going on for eight years, and I'll be honest with you, I really believe it needs to come to an end. With that said, we also have township board members refusing to listen to residents when they come up there with their concerns. It seems as though they've already had their minds made up, and I think that's a real travesty. I think it also helps when the public speaks a little bit kinder to them so that they can have some kind of mutual respect. With that said, I also think that the budget is township trustee's main concern, providing legislative oversight over to three full-time electeds to ensure that work's getting done quickly and promptly. The budgetary, we've had issues with it here and back in January, February, where a budget ran out and it was never brought back to the board until just this June. Stuff like that can't go on. It has to stop. I think that our employees that are doing the budget, in fact, I think maybe I may have hired one of them, and they're still there after all these years, since '08, and they are doing a fantastic job, but I still believe that there may be some spending issues here. Township issues, the issues in the township, infrastructure upgrades, inflation, revenues, expenses. While we have seemingly high revenues in our water and sewer department, those expenses are climbing very quickly, and they're eating away at that money. It's getting really bad. And inflation, I think that's where some of our budgetary concerns may be coming in because we're not seeing far enough down the road for good fiscal responsibility. We have other issues in the area. The amendments and the budget amendments, constant, there are so many, and it just tells me we are not looking far enough down the road. Quality growth in our community, planning, zoning, everybody's been having fits about the growth. Well, I've been here 60 years, and I feel the same way. I think we need to get a better handle on our planning commissioners and get a better understanding where they're coming from. Road millage. I am the one who builds your roads. I've been doing it for 40 years. I am a 40-year operating engineer. As far as the millage, I need to hear more from our township attorney and the legalities on what to do with that money before I make any rash decisions. I think that would be the proper way to go. But with that said, I'd like to remind everybody, get out there and vote this year. Vote for the person you think is going to do the best for your township, and take care of our township, and ensure that our seniors are getting the programs and services that they expect and that they have been paying for all their lives here. With that said, everybody, have a great day. Thank you.
Hi. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Bruce Quigley, and I'm running for Independence Township Trustee. First, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I was born in our township in 1969. In fact, my father still lives in that very same house. My wife also was born and raised here. We both graduated from Clarkson High School. Our children graduated from here, and we look forward to our grandchildren doing the same. We're lucky enough to be the second of four generations in this beautiful township. I'm a construction field superintendent. I deal with the day-to-day operations on large-scale retail remodels. I've worn many hats in our community, builder, realtor, rough carpenter. It's possible I may even had a hand in building your house. Anyway, my point is, I'm not an attorney or a career politician. I'm a blue-collar resident that wants only your vote. I'm not holding fundraisers. You probably won't see as much of my name as others. My signs may not be as big and pretty as others, but if elected, I won't owe anybody payback, period. I'll be able to represent the residents freely and fairly. We all struggle with the same issues in our community, the traffic being a major one. I could go on and on, but one good example is those having to use the Sashaba Road daily like myself. It can get extremely frustrating with the terrible design of the intersection at 75. Now we have more cluster housing, grocery stores, going in right there. This area will be impassable, especially when Pine Knob events are happening. I'm not against growing. It needs to be done, but responsibly. I know this goes along with the master plan. Well, maybe we need to revisit that and stop having consultants from out of the area design this stuff. We have many talented and qualified engineering firms locally that understand these challenges. This brings me to another point. There is no way any outside residents should have any place on a board, committee, et cetera, to decide the policies of our township. The current board disagrees. As trustee, I would carefully examine these issues before I vote. Too many times, I've watched the board vote unanimously for issues that I can't understand why. I've seen them vote to want to compete with our small businesses using the final liquor license to sell alcohol. I strongly disagree with this. You should never compete with your small businesses supporting the community, especially when it's so hard for many of these businesses to expand and develop due to red tape. We all get frustrated with paying taxes. That will never change. I think, if you're like me, it's a bit less painful if the money is spent on sensible things. We need our emergency services to keep us safe. I fully support these, but I think we should work on improving these without raising taxes. Let's cut out the unnecessary spending, such as, why did we need a new township logo? Not only did it cost money to have it designed, every sign, t-shirt, uniform, truck, et cetera, will now need to be rebranded, and why? And the logo looks like the mountains of the Pacific Northwest with a Christmas tree bell. Look, if you're watching this, you most likely have been to or seen our township meetings. Well, the last few have been embarrassing at best. We need to demand good government and get rid of this Jerry and Maury-type nonsense. Now, let me be clear. I don't claim to have all the answers, and I shouldn't. This is a huge commitment for people to take on. I've sat and I've watched, but I can't be silent anymore. You, the residents, should have a voice. I vow to keep channels open and discuss these issues with you about the community. The only thing I guaranteed, as guaranteed, is change. It's up to you, the residents of the beautiful community, to decide if you want to continue on the path and live in the likes of Bloomfield and Royal Oak, which are wonderful communities, but if I wanted that atmosphere, that's where I'd live. Help me, help you keep what's left of our small-town community. I'm asking for your vote for Independence Township Trustee. Thank you, and God bless.
Hello, Independence Township residents. I'm Ron Ritchie, one of your current township trustees. I've lived in the Independence Township for 28 years, and I've raised my four kids here, and now I have eight grandkids, and my three youngest grandkids currently attend Clarkson schools. I've been a local business owner for many years. This manufacturing company was located on Dixie Highway, just south of Annarsville Road. We produce fasteners for the automotive industry, employing over 150 people, many of which were from this local Independence Township area. My years of business experience has been a great benefit during my time working with the township to help me relate to financial and employee issues, and I've been active volunteering to work on many of the township committees over these years, these past years. I currently serve on the Finance Audit Committee, the Safety Path Committee, the Planning Commission, the Election Commission, and the Hourly Employee Benefit Committee. I still have the passion needed to continue in this endeavor, and this is why I've chosen again to run for this trustee position. I feel that there are two major issues facing the township in the near future. It's leadership and financial competence. Independence Township needs leadership. This means every person elected to the Board of Trustees needs to be able to weigh issues before them and develop an opinion properly to cast their vote on what is best for the township. Previous experience in managing finance issues, along with experience to oversee township employees through multiple situations, are essential in those you elect. Leadership is providing the proper stewardship to maintain the character of the community while overseeing, controlling, and controlling the growth that will inherently occur. Our leaders must be able to communicate their vision and provide solutions to bring their vision to reality. Selecting good leaders must be a top priority for all voters to protect the future of the township. Financial competence. I believe in keeping government small and efficient, and this is reflected in my vision of how finances should be managed. Just like your checkbook at home, the township must budget for services provided so that we utilize taxpayer dollars to the best of our ability. We need to provide the best services at the lowest obtainable cost, all while managing to stay within a tax millage rate approved by the township residents. Looking to spend money just because we have it is not prudent. Planning for the future. Seeking alternative sources of income for the township instead of raising taxes on residents to maintain and grow services are one method to provide for the township. Another method is finding more efficient ways of providing services to the residents while holding costs down for the future. Independence Township is one of the last small-town residential areas in Oakland County, and we need to work hard to preserve it through those that we elect. In closing, I want to thank all the township residents that have supported me in the past, and I'm again asking and looking forward to receiving your vote on August 6 so that I can continue to serve as your township trustee. Remember, vote for Ritchie for trustee, and I want to thank you.
Hi, I'm Tasha Shergan, and I'm running for trustee for Independence Township. I have an accounting degree from Michigan State, and for 18 years, I owned and operated a successful small business. Over that time, I learned a lot, and the hands-on experience in business management and leadership are skills that will be important in my role as township trustee. When COVID hit, we pretty much changed our entire lives. I stepped away from my business, we shifted to homeschooling, and we moved north to Independence Township. One of the things that we fell in love with was the up-north vibe, yet we were still in Oakland County, where we've lived and raised our kids for the past 20 years. I love to be involved and to participate. Volunteering is part of who I am, so soon after moving here, I started volunteering at the Clarkson Family Farm. I'm also on the Independence Township Residential Open Spaces Advisory Committee, which was created to preserve the beauty of our township. When I watched past township meetings and learned about the lands that were leveled and how it impacted residents, the environment, and property values, that was a pivotal point in my decision to run for trustee. I've also been an advocate for health and wellness, as well as parental rights, for the past 15 years. Many times, we don't feel like elected officials are listening. I know this, and I recognize that our elected officials are here as public servants to listen to the residents and to do what's best for our community. As your next township trustee, I'm here to uphold the Constitution and represent the citizens of our township. Find out more about my campaign at taschafortrustee.com. That's Tasha, the number four, trustee.com. Thank you, and remember to vote for Tasha for trustee on August 6.
I am here with five reasons you should not vote for me. My name is Jessica Spencer, and I'm running for Independence Township trustee. You should not vote for me because my name is spelled with one S and you recognize it on the ballot. You should not vote for me because I drive a hot pink Tesla and you've seen it around town for the past few years. You shouldn't vote for me because I sold your neighbor's home or a home of yours, and it was great working with me. You shouldn't vote for me because you've been to an Easter egg hunt or a free concert in the park that I've put on. You shouldn't vote for me because I've lived in this community since I was 12. All of these things are true, but they're no reason to vote for someone. The reason you should vote for me is because we have the same values. We've been raised in the same community. What's important to you is important to me. It's my goal as an Independence Township trustee to find out what our township wants. What do we want our community to be? What are the things that are important to us? A lot of times, we notice things happening, and we disagree with them. We don't like the way that something was developed, or we don't like that this has gone in here. But the truth is, the time to speak up to that was years ago, when these things were being made in township meetings. My goal for my tenure as township trustee is to shed a light on the things that are happening in our community when it's time for you to voice your opinion about them. In our community, we have a lot of time and energy and discussions about things that are happening at the very top of the ballot, like president and governor and things like that, but we don't notice or pay attention to the things that are happening at a local level. It's my goal as a township trustee to bring these things that are happening right in your neighborhood to your attention when there's time for you to do something about it. I grew up in this community, and I love it. I love the people that I surround myself with. I love our township. And the truth is, I know you do too. Everyone wants to move to a community and then close the door behind them so that the community stays just the way it was when they found it. But the truth is, our community is growing. Our community is going to continue to grow, moving forward, and it's really important to me to find a way that we to me to find a way that we can welcome people, continue to grow, but stay that small-town feel that brought so many of us, including my parents, to this community with their young kids. Now I live here with my young kids, and it's just as important to me as it's ever been to have a community that reflects the values of the people who live in it. And so I welcome you to reach out to me and ask me questions about what my values are, and I would love to hear what's important to you as we move forward together as a township, protecting the traditions that made our township what it is and introducing it to tomorrow. Thank you so much. I can't wait to see you.
Hi, I'm Jim Tetter, Township trustee, and I'm asking for your support and your vote on Tuesday, August 6th, in the Republican primary. I've been a resident of Independence Township for nineteen years, and I consider myself a resident of the greater area for almost fifty years. I'm a 1987 graduate of Clarkson High School, and I'm proud to raise three children here along with my wife Nancy. Our youngest will be graduating in 2025. I work for ITC Holdings. We are a utility that owns and maintains the high-voltage electric lines, not only here in the township, but also throughout the greater part of the state. I've also been a proud entrepreneur, having owned a variety of businesses, the longest of which is Jim Tetter Productions. We offer entertainment and production services for a variety of events. I'm also a proud community member and have a long and proven record for service. I have been a longtime member of the Clarkston Rotary Club, having joined in 1996, and I have the privilege of serving as the 2024-2025 president. I'm also a proud board member of the Clarkson Foundation for Public Education. As a former educator, this is the cause very near and dear to my heart. And I've also been a previous wrestling coach, a Cub master through local Cub Scout packs, among others, and it is a privilege to also have served as your state representative from 2015 through 2018. Independence Township is the place where my wife and I have chosen to raise our family and also look to grow old here over the long, many years that, God willing, we will have before us. Some of the things that are most important to me as your township trustee, first and foremost, with a $30 million budget, I strive to be a fiduciary and a good fiscal steward of your tax dollars. Staying within budget is paramount, and also being wise and prudent in the way we spend your money is something that I will maintain as a top priority. I also believe in government transparency and that we do our best work in broad daylight. And frankly, I will continue to explain my votes and justify my votes at board meetings so that all residents know whether they agree or disagree with my positions, will know exactly where I'm coming from. I'm an active member of the community, and I pride myself of being available and accessible and in and around town. I always look forward to catching up with constituents. I also believe in a balanced approach to development, and certainly, we have many communities around us that share many similar characteristics and traits. However, I believe that we are unique and that we've been able to maintain in large part an appropriate balance between development and maintaining our rural heritage, and I will continue to carry that priority forward. I'd also like to acknowledge that Independence Township, like many communities within the state of Michigan, are aging communities. Enrollment within our schools is down, populations within and around the state have shrunk, but we also need to be mindful that as an aging community, that we are also looking out for the priorities that are important to our seniors and to ensure that they are not overburdened with taxes and unnecessary regulations, as I'd like to see not only myself, but all seniors within the community to be able to continue to age in place. So based upon my background and experience and being among the most qualified of candidates, having a business and management experience, actively engaged in the community, and previous term of service in representing you, I'd like to again ask for your vote on Tuesday, August 6th, and help me keep Michigan and Independence Township better with Tetter.